Bring this meeting to order. Special call meeting for Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda approval of renewal of resolutions declaring local state emergency due to hurricane. Any discussion or motion to approve?
Some of them.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We just got four, uh, four zero.
Yes.
Second item, approval of change order with Kirch Construction adding a three-foot-by-four-foot inlet at the intersection of Wyman and Jenkins. Correct manual adjustment unit price in account for rounding of significant digits. Budget increase of four thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents to be paid by FDOT.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero. Approval of pay applications two and three from Kirch Construction for work associated with road construction of Wyman Street and authorized finance department to release check budget impact funded by DOT.
Mr. Chairman, move it.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero. Approval of pay applications three and four from, out of number four, I'm sorry. Approval of pay applications three and four from Kirch Construction award associated with reconstruction of Carter Avenue and authorized finance department to release check funded by DOT. Any question or motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero. Award bid, two thousand and twenty-three dash one seven and authorized the chairman to execute a contract with construction incorporated for the paving of Eightieth Terrace and One Hundred and Thirty-Ninth Drive, paid by FDOT. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mobley.
How do you, uh, well, I don't know. Let's go for work. Keep, see, uh, there was not a lot of change orders. Where do you, how do you, uh?
You follow the.
I was looking at the one, I mean, we hadn't had the book, but.
Basically, you followed the plans.
Everything looks like it's, uh.
We, we have discussion ahead of time that I didn't expect any change orders at all. And that's why I try to preface everything by is, you know, I mean, occasionally they have something. Well, I can't guarantee that, but I'm not planning any.
Yeah.
But.
We get, you never know what you're going into.
Right, right.
So as far as the original scope of work, you don't plan on any changes.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Brenda's here too. She's our project manager on projects, so I hope you'll met Brenda, but yes, we're going to give this more attention. Question also. You guys can.
Um, as far as.
As far as the change order that you see, that you guys have already approved, basically, they didn't know that there was going to be a drainage issue uncovered whenever they
were out there, and they wanted to make ditches to, to handle the drainage issue, but they couldn't because of the utilities that were there. So the inlet was the way to solve the drainage problem without cutting any of the utilities. So that's the explanation there. Now, that was all prompted by the city of.
Yes. In your review for the plans, you don't expect anything.
No.
For the Eightieth and one thirty-ninth?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would, you know, with what Commissioner Mobley's saying, and I think the chairman too, if it's a, if the scope of work changes due to underlying issue that is unforeseen at the time of the acceptance of the contract, then, then yeah, I mean, you know, those we, we can understand there's change order. I think in the past, we've seen some change orders that kind of seem like somebody missed that, you know, so. My concern would be hopefully nobody has missed anything that's going to hit us with a quarter million dollar change order. Oops, sorry, we missed that type thing.
This thing.
Those are, those need to be counted for, but if it's a, hey, no, we, we turn that into a left-hand curve instead of a right-hand, that's different. That's different.
This is a, this is a dirt to, to payment project, so it shouldn't be anything that we don't already know this there, so.
I understand. I wouldn't put words to anybody. That's kind of my.
I share your thoughts.
Yeah.
I think we all, maybe we all agree on that. Is there any further discussion that can get a motion to approve?
I would go to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero. Number six, approval of task order with Locklear Associates for construction engineering services associated with the reconstruction of Eightieth Street and One Hundred and Thirty-Ninth Drive, uh, funded from road department professional services line. What's this for?
This is for CII work for Eightieth and One Thirty-Ninth. As you recall, we changed our formats on CII work, and this will be taken care of that. Normally, when you see a, a project, engineering may run ten, twelve percent of the construction cost. CI may run five to seven, depending on the, this is well under that, that figure. And, uh, we looked at, um, very closely on what we need the inspectors to be watching for, so we have a lot of extra time spent there, and, um, the price is considerably less than what it normally would be.
Commissioner Land.
I'm okay with it. Um, you know, that's just my two cents. I mean, you gotta get it done. Um, this is the new route, which others to take, I think. Hopefully, going forward, a lot of these will fall under the, the bid. You know, the state usually calls for CII as part of the grant.
Right.
Not bid grant. But this, you know, I can get it, understand it. I'm okay with it.
We'll be having two or coming later for a project that come in. One is for Express Street to Brantford, um, so small project, but, uh, you know, you know, CII working on that, also the trail, the freeway, and the, but there's state money for that one, so.
Other questions? Can I get a motion? Motion, motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero.
Mr. Chairman, I asked Eddie to bring some information for us. As y'all are aware, or I think y'all are aware, we, some of us went out to look at a potential location for a fire station on northern part of the county. We toured the facility. It's an old church. It's not that, it was, it was a church, um, block with four centers, so it's hardened, it appears to be hardened. What Mark and others looked at the ceiling, or the, opened up the ceiling and looked at the, the rafters, and pleased what they saw up there as far as the strapping goes. And, uh, asking amounts for the, it's a building at five acres with an outbuilding, um, that's six hundred ninety-five thousand. Then we can negotiate down significantly on, on that, or I would expect us to. But just wanted to get your, Eddie, you prepared this, I'll let you run it through.
Basically, um, in conversations with Mr. Scott, uh, Mr. Meeks, Mr. Norris, kind of, uh, hashing back and forth on what we thought might be a, a fair offer to offer on the property, came up with a price of four hundred fifty thousand as an offer. If you look at that last page of what I, I put together in a little packet there, you can see that the estimate to build a new station is somewhere around two million dollars plus, um, without the property. Uh, so if you look at this, if we take the asking price, or the proposed offer on the property, uh, I got a construct, a ballpark estimate on the red iron portion of it from Guinness Construction, divided half a million dollars, give or take, plus or minus, you know, probably a little less than that, but went on the high side. Renovation of the church for crew quarters and other, other miscellaneous expenses with, you know, some paving, dirt work, all this stuff, talking to Mark Durham on that, we come up with two hundred fifty thousand. So we're, you know, we're at about one point two million dollars if we, if, with those estimates versus two million plus on building a new station, so.
I see it's got multi-stall bathrooms and two single-stall handicap facility. Is all that going to be redone, or is that going to be able to be left alone?
Well, it's gonna, it'll be renovated into showers and, and stuff like that.
So you are going to have to go in and redo.
Yeah, oh yeah, we got, we've got to redo, we've got to redo bathrooms, put a kitchen in.
Oh, it doesn't have a kitchen?
It does not have a kitchen, no. But it's, it's a, it's basically a blank canvas of a hardened building that we'll be able to utilize some of the stuff inside, but it'll be, it'll be a rebuild inside.
Pretty much just by the shell.
Right.
The AC is that ninety-nine model two?
Uh, the realtor seemed to think it had been replaced, but we haven't confirmed that yet. Part of that estimate that Mark put in there was replacing ACs and everything to try to get it, you know, do it right.
What about the generator?
Uh, and that's add the generator all as well. It has a well on property that I think will be serviceable. It's a four-inch well, that worst case would be upgraded to a larger, larger pump.
Mr. Chairman, basically, we're gonna have to act on this today.
Yeah.
Just need God us to stay up if he wants to.
What about appraisal?
We need to get an appraisal done definitely, and, um, somewhere that comes in, but, um, you know, four to four fifty is, is, is my thought on the asking price. Would be considerably less expensive to go this route as opposed to building a new facility, but, um, the, the structure itself's in good shape. Actually, the lady that was coming, the owner, drove her van, uh, uh, into the building, she, there's an awning that goes, or an entryway, uh, in the front roof. She drove into it and didn't even put a scratch on the building, so the, the roof caught the top of them. But, um, we certainly will get a, get a appraisal and see where we are with that. But if you want us to move faster to make an offer, we do have, but I would, I think, getting appraisal first would be the right thing to do.
Can we, or Commissioner Land, you can go to real estate, go, what do we need there?
I was just thinking about that.
Do we need to put a binder on it, or?
I would, I would, I would, I mean, my, to start from scratch, my thought process, number one has always been the catalyst side in, in building a station out there as a, as a, number one. However, um, with this opportunity, you know, laying it in our lap, if you will, with a concrete structure, um, right on the highway, far superior location than the other parcel that we anticipated potentially building a station on, um, with, with, with this laying in our lap, I mean, how do you not, not explore, uh, this? So with that being said, I think that before you start spending money on appraisal and stuff like that, you need to tie the property up so that you're not spending money on appraisal and somebody else buys it out from underneath it and you don't even have a contract, and, and that was just a waste of appraisal. So if I was gonna pursue this, I would make an offer contingent upon approved, you know?
Go deal with this.
Well, yeah, get a, get a sixty-day feasibility study or something and tie it up for sixty days. Surely, we could find someone to pump out an appraisal to justify spending, you know, public funds, um, during that sixty-day period, I would think we could find somebody to do that, just so that we know that if we spend the, whatever the appraisal's going to cost us, I don't know what the appraisal will, praiser will, he'll consider that residential or he'll want to charge us commercial rate, but nonetheless, you spend a thousand, twenty-five-hundred dollars on appraisal, it's not just waste of spending. You know, you got first dibs on the property with a, you know, sixty-day due diligence, if, if she'll, the seller would agree, um, on purchase, purchase price of some amount. So that's what I would do, I would, you know, whatever y'all want to do.
Do we authorize Mr. Scott to negotiate?
I mean, is there anybody else chomping at the bit to buy this space without Commissioner Hale here? I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want to get in front of him of authorizing the release of hundreds of thousands of dollars without him being here to be on board with that.
Speaking, speaking to Commissioner Hale, uh, later, he was supportive of, of the property. He thought it was a good, a good piece of property and good facility, so.
Well, I mean, if you spoke to him and he's okay with that, then I, I would be okay with moving forward and letting administrative staff pursue, trying to acquire a contract, but as long as Commissioner Hale has been, you know, made aware of it and he's okay with it, because I'm like, say, a hundred thousand dollars, I wouldn't want to do that without his consent, then that'd be disrespectful.
What do we need to do to give you, do we need to make a motion on that for authorization of negotiating, or?
You're gonna need to give him maximum authority. How much can you get?
I would say up to a half a million dollars. Now, that's just me. These three are.
This is forty-seven thirty-three? Yeah. I'll be okay with that. Half a million.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes, I'll be good.
I don't get a vote, but I, we, I was out there, they, they did actually join the building themselves, the strap down, I mean, obviously, it's a CMU building, um, so it's, you know, I saw very few issues with settling or any, it, it, it looked, it looked, it looked, obviously, the chief will have to do some renovations out there, but it is right on the highway, so you're thinking about all the savings you're gonna have as far as trying to build roads or get back to an apartment, because all that's already there. So that's a lot of costs that's already sitting there, wells there, subjects there. So it does seem like the, the only thing, I think we talked about, I can't remember any, but just to be sure, when whoever does this appraisal or looks at the fine details, the driveway to the building does not look like it's on its own property. I don't know if there's a map that shows that, it looks like it's on, I suppose.
It does look like it, looking at, I mean, now, the property appraisers website sometimes maps are not a hundred percent, so survey, I, what I would, what I would, what I would say to that is, hey, during that sixty-day feasibility, we, we have a surveyor, whoever, I don't care, go out there and identify the corners for us, locate the corners, and let that be part, I mean, we don't need a full-blown survey, but somebody run out and locate the corners and then potentially look at, is that a shared easement type thing? And if it is, then we need to address that, because as I have said before, is like, I do not want our fire station having a shared driveway, if at all possible avoided, avoided. You know, I don't want our guys having to run into a little traffic jam trying to get to the house.
That's the only, that's the only thing that we noticed, Ron and I, when we were looking at it, it, it is a little unique.
Yeah, it's an easement to that, like, for, that is.
Yeah, there's an easement that goes to a, a, like a flag lot behind there, but it's a little unusual why that driveway goes all the way back south and then comes out on one twenty-nine. It, it is almost like it was meant to be for multi-use, if you look at how it's positioned. I only bring it up to say, just want to be sure the driveway gets addressed, uh, when y'all look at the building, so somebody doesn't say you don't have access to that.
Well, just saying, that is a shared easement, and that is a shared driveway, is it possible at some point to move it so it's just our driveway?
We'll show it to you and see and, and look at that.
That's obviously the concern is, if it is shared in DOT, and, you know, so I think that's why we need to.
That easement goes back to my knowledge from what the realtor was, because what, no person owns a lot behind it, that it is, it goes back to one residential lot behind it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, then, just on the basic property law, that's gonna remain an easement, you can't.
Yeah.
So, but if I could raise the motion for the board.
Please.
A motion to authorize the county administrator to negotiate with the property owner up to five hundred thousand dollars in spending authorities subject to a sixty-day feasibility study to address the concerns brought forth by the board and also subject to an appropriate survey and appraisal.
So, I'm sorry, we're sorry. Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward, zero. Any other business?
And obviously, this would come back to the commission for approval. Just bringing up, speaking of a couple of things, um, there's a special session that we asked, you know, if y'all are in meetings, just that we'd ask, could we have one for Adalia? And there'll be other things added to that also, but I believe that Commissioner Land is, is gonna do some work with the, what committee is that?
Hurricane Resiliency Committee until I see. First, I remember they'd asked me to come over here.
I'm not sure how that all tied together, that, that, that starting is sixth.
When is your committee, is it the sixth?
Sixth, okay. So we'll be supporting that effort. I did send an email to, I mean, Kevin Guthrie's office yes, last night, asking, it hasn't questions, I haven't been able to get access to his answers yet, so, about if we do Project Summit, what that looks like, um, you know, do we get reimbursed if we jump out there ahead of, ahead of the state on land acquisition for that, um, kind of what that looks like, so just trying to get some, we did get a, I'm sure, I think y'all are aware, we tried to get a, um, the, um, facility down in Pasco County, to try to get, look at that facility, and, um, got a, the administrator there wants to have a phone conference before we set up a meeting, so. Chip seal projects were done, um, the ones that we're going to do, um, where, unless y'all are aware, we started talking about shifting to paving instead of the chip seal, so we actually show up and do the work ourselves, so we got some, some projects in three, five, one and four to do, just have to get this scheduled out and start beginning of it done. Moysacals is starting back again after the debris and stuff, much needed, um, but, um, had the situation also, just bringing y'all up to speed on, um, we have a homeowner that down in, I'm not sure if it's three, I think it's in three or five, I'm not sure where, where it is, a lady that thinks her property goes out in the middle of the road, um, and though we've been maintaining it, and, um, so we should be hopefully getting the survey today, I heard it was ready, um, so law enforcement, if she gets in front of the grader, just arrest her and take her to jail, um, but, um, you know, we can't have people standing in the middle of the road blocking our graders from grading the road, we've been grading for a number of years, um, so, um, anyway, we're working through that process, trying to do it right, um, hoping we can show the, show the documents, uh, to make sure.
I don't think a document's gonna help change our mind, that's one. That Mr., the wonderful Mr. White has passed on to me in redistricting, and my phone has already been blowing up nonstop now that I'm the new guy, um.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, I bet you. Lost some sleep over there, so I've gotten five-minute voicemails.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just on that subject, just so the board's aware, regardless of what the survey says in terms of descriptions of whether or not it's an allocated road or not under Florida statute, if the county maintains a road for four years or more, it's a road. So if there's a grader who can testify he's been grading that road for four years or more, that's a road, and it's a crime to interfere with the public's access, so.
I think it's a road.
With respect to Mr. Scott getting the survey, I'm not arguing with doing it correctly. I'm also saying this is not close, this is not a debate.
Yeah, we actually built a few houses where the property, the survey showed their property in the middle of a county paved road. I mean, literally, I can tell you the road number in the, and they've got the survey, it goes to the center of the paved road, so the issue then came up with the gentleman was, am I paying taxes on that, that I'm not being able to, I said, that's, you have to go talk to somebody else, but, but that does happen sometimes, not that they can do anything about it, but.
I think it's been a long time issue, and I think that, I would have to, has the county has been grading, maintaining that road for as long as they can remember, I don't know why it's become, I think it's been an issue for.
That's what it's for me as well.
Anyway, nonetheless, it's an issue, so handle that however you want to handle it.
We're gonna be moving forward through that process, so I get it, but.
These people that's, Truman, I don't get it, I, I'm sorry, I know we don't have no control over it, but these guys that's out here doing this right away, Truman.
The hangers.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how they're getting paid, hopefully, it ain't about an hour. I could have cut what they cut in a half a day, and they've been there a week.
They were on our road for two weeks.
I mean, I, I appreciate, I get, we're not gonna have to go do it as a result of this, I mean, they've opened up some roads really nice, but, I mean, how long can this go on for, because it's gonna take at the rate they're going, probably two or three years at this rate, so I don't know, and I keep getting the phone calls, because they think it's our people, and I'm telling them, no, it's not ours, you know, it's, it's a state contractor, you know, on and on, but they're pretty hot about how long it's taken to do that, so whether it's our money or state money, they, they ain't happy about it.
Mine's all right, so just give it out of your pocket. We do have a, a number for DOT, um, that citizens can call, it's a informational number, they can, you know, we got it at the office, we'll be glad to provide that.
Can y'all group take that out, please? So we can pass it along?
Have they got rubber yet, you know? I had a look, okay. If you would, by midweek, if they haven't got it by midweek, let me know, so I can remind them.
Oh, you got the festival coming up, Brad?
Yeah, it's next, first next month, somewhere right there, first part, the cornbread.
Ms. Betty, I see you here, did you have something for this meeting?
No, I think what I have can wait until the regulars.
Okay, well, I guess.
I mean, unless you.
We're here, we can deal with it.
Okay, um, I wanted to, um, ask the board's permission, um, to close on December first for our annual staff development day. Is that how?
We've been doing that for, for, or basically been doing that for years, been approved by the commission.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So do you need a motion for that, Ms. Betty, or Craig, or, or just consensus from the board?
They just, the consensus.
I'm good.
I'm good with it. Everybody's good with it.
That's probably, probably something in the future that the minister can just approve, because that's just a process, so. Apologize for having too many things on the agenda today, we had some timing issues on those, trying to get the information, the details worked out with, with contractors and our engineers on the change orders, they were pennies apart, you know, it's no real money, it's just, it just.
Well, while we're, while we're here too, let me just, I brought it up at the board meeting about the mine, I need to do some more bores on another piece to check it out, and I just want to make sure the board's okay to move forward with that, and.
Sure.
Spending the money to bore about six more holes to check out another property.
How much is that?
I don't know how much they were, Greg, do you remember?
Well, over a hundred, I think, per?
Per hole? It's not a great amount of money, and I'm not sure what it was now.
Maybe we have, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we only got so much.
We need to do that, make sure we do that.
But I just, I just want y'all to be involved and not think that I'm just out here putting in the, doing stuff, but.
Although I do think you can trace that district five problem into three. I didn't have nothing to do with that.
Adam always says, make it the bad guy. Adam always says, like, you're the bad guy, that was the ball.
And then he wonders why I'm late to these things.
All right, I got you, get tired ready for you.
It's like fresh meat.
Is there anything else over here?
Just informational, it is time to renew my contract. So I have got a few little minor tweaks to give to Adam, I'm putting in the words. But I'm sure we've got some other stuff y'all want to do, so.
We'll let you know. We'll get back to you. Anything else?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Listening about the change orders, your designer should have errors and omissions in their contract. And I certainly wouldn't do it for four or five thousand dollars. But if you have a big one that's like a hundred or something like that, you need to look at the errors and omissions.
Well, we've been through that and I have brought that up two, two years ago. And everybody dropped out like a hot potato at the time, like, no, we, we're not doing that, we're not doing that. I'm like, well, you know, those, those professionals have those engineers or have that insurance for a, a reason. But noted, I'm aware of it. So the next one that comes down the line, that's a significant amount of money, 'cause I brought that up on a separate project, I was like, no, 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 this, this is not our fault. Why are, why are we eating this eighty, hundred grand? And the previous staff is like, we're not going down that road, I'm telling you, I say, okay.
For a big one that's worth it.
But ain't four or five thousand dollars, you're to death too, I wouldn't do it with that.
It's not worth the hassle in the court.
It's the hassle.
Party fees and all that, you go eat that up.
At that point, you just argue that one.
On the E and O, the expenses, just having done those lawsuits, it's, remember, you gotta, you're gonna have to hire the engineer before they can make, you can argue and make a claim that their E and O should've caught it. We would have to eat the dime of hiring our own engineer to go back and look at the project as it originally existed and instead a reasonable contractor in their position, or engineer in their position at the time would have caught it. So it's, how much do we wanna spend to go after? So it's the juice is worth the squeeze questions, Mr. Hannigan correctly brings it up, which just depends on the size of your.
Point well taken.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Don't hesitate to ask. Just the maps, Mr. Jennifer, when I was headed out, wanted to get rid of me down. And those are the new district maps and she just, Jennifer paint, his Jenny. So she just asked me to hand them off to you and to the attorney. And she said if y'all have any questions or anything to call for.
These are the new voting district maps?
Yes.
Got the new precincts on there?
I, I hadn't even opened it, she called me walking out the door.
It's just the lines, but you just.
It's number one maps, not, not, um.
I got some, not some of that.
Not Kinsey maps.
Mr. Chairman.
Chris Perkins.
This property, uh, you know, witness building, was it purchased from someone's, were the witnesses first?
Sir?
Was, was it purchased from someone else?
Yes.
Oh, you purchased, okay. You want, with the, with the price, what, based on what? What I found on the property appraiser's website, that they bought it from, wherever she bought it from, she bought it for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I saw that.
That price, I mean, that, that negotiating price would be, if she's still making money off of it, if you get it.
Well, I saw, before we go too far down that road, that two sixty on, on the property website shows that purchase as improved, but with a U, as in unqualified sale. So I don't know if that was a, the church, the church chapel, I, I don't know the terminology, no disrespect, but, whatever, I don't know if that was a, hey, I'll save this and buy it, and it was a distressed sale, I don't know, but that two sixty sale, it has a U beside it as unqualified, as comp. So there obviously was some distress or there was something going on there, that two sixty number, because they didn't use it as a Q, which is qualified. So I, might be worse figuring out what happened there. But nonetheless, I don't think it was, it was an arms-length transaction, is what I'm saying. I don't think it was something, something, some distress or something going on there. Don't have that two sixty, 'cause they didn't use it, they, they have it noted as an unqualified.
That's important too, because the change of, yes.
So if you, you could, Mike could ask around and figure out what the distress was, but I don't think it was an arms-length transaction. They would've used it as a qualified sale. Property praiser or Coq de Coeur, somebody in public records, Mike could investigate that and see if there was some title issues or something, who knows what it was, but it's not listed as a qualified transaction.
We was talking about that, that driveway. Would that driveway be sufficient, it would be wider for you all to have, you know, to come in and out, it wouldn't need to widen anyway.
The width of it should be fine, and, and we're so preliminary and we don't even exactly know moving forward, you know, where, where the bays may end up, whether, whether they're in the back, on the side, where, where it's gonna be, so. But yes, currently, they're, they're wide enough to maneuver with the trucks, no problem.
But that north side in the rear would give you a, they wrote for setbacks to build it, you know, too.
The north side does have retention though, there is a retention area on the north side, so. If you kind of see that opening in the trees there, that's a retention pond.
Those, those tied up, embedded into the CMU?
Yeah, they were, you know, they poured metal across the top straps from four down into the, into the top, wrapped over the trusses and then nailed in, just typical, what you'd see in typical CMU-type construction. The building was actually built in ninety-nine, so it was pre-Florida building code, which that would've put it back on the old sou- southeast building code. Southern building code, how do you wanna say it? But I don't know, and again, I'm no engineer, I don't know what else they would've required really differently if it had fell over into the, you know, Florida, two thousand Florida building code. But, but yeah, it was, it was strapped, it's got plywood deck, screw-down metal roof.
I mean, wood fall into the, that's embedded, I don't think they changed the, the language for tied up the trusses. In that new code now, so I think we do that.
Yeah, that was one of the things you just wanted to poke around, see what we went up under there. Actually, Mark's the one that kind of climbed up in there, but he shines a light.
I guess we do some like, oh, maybe a wind, a wind mitigation on it, then that'll, that'll tell all that.
Mr. Scott, I would add, if we, if we do get, are able to get the property under contract, under, under part of our feasibility, we need to reach out to our engineer, whomever that is that we wanna use, to see if that retention area will be affected with the addition of more impervious surfaces, to see if that needs to be expanded and if there's enough property or what that dirt work looks like. In the event we do tie it up, I think that needs to be part of your feasibility study to see if there's enough retention there with the square footage increase on the new impervious surfaces.
Anything else? Anybody? I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, I.
You can get a doodah now.